France. So, uh.
The.
That's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I did Guatemala tomorrow.
All right.
Yeah.
Let me, uh, morning. Let me run down and see if there's any others.
Good morning.
Good morning.
And how they doing?
Hey.
Breathing.
Jake is saying. You ready to go to Mexico? Is it you ready to go to Mexico?
I don't think I'm going to.
Maybe.
I'd like to go to Guatemala, but somehow.
Yes.
It's crazy.
All of their cooks.
Every end.
I can see.
It's 80 degrees. Yeah. Forty something today.
More than forty pounds. My work. Yeah. Well, you did some hours. I put it up. The. You know. The long horse. You know, on the east side.
What's your concern? Oh.
Well. It's okay. Yeah.
Yes. So. I don't. Last.
Should I?
But I don't. Do that. Do you do?
Do you understand?
I don't.
There's no. She's. Oh, is that what? Did I miss that?
Yeah.
Okay. I missed that.
She'll do a good job.
How's the road? Good? Oh. Aren't they pulling out of the pit there on 1105 now?
Yeah.
So not, not coming up the road anymore.
Did what?
Are they still coming up the road?
Well, yeah.
Are they off? Even though they've got. I don't know. It's 10 plus. We'll go ahead and call this meeting in order.
Everyone, Father, we just thank you for the name of all these actions we witnessed and we saw about county. But that's all we just actually believe God directs and he is strong. For you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. All my Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state, the God, one indivisible.
Good morning, everybody. How are y'all doing today? Hey. Good, good, good. At this time, any person with business before the court not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the court. No formal action can be taken on these items at this meeting. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes. Okay, okay. Old business court to discuss and consider inner precinct project scheduling staffing. Anything y'all need to discuss?
Or the multiple.
What can I almost hard pass the can? Essentially, we've got a full group back, that is, you know, to the December holidays and the all of the, one taking vacation and all the things behind. Everything began, that was lax, several while, but we're back on track. Good, good, good. All right, we're gonna go ahead and move down to, uh, in new business. We're gonna go ahead and go to end. Court to discuss and consider requests from the beautification committee to help with dump trucks and loaders on Saturday, April 22nd, for the citywide cleanup. Also, I think there's some other dates that we've discussed or that want to be discussed, so.
May 13th and June 10th.
And so I'm gonna let, uh, we have Jerry and Eli and Barbara here to discuss this. So I'm gonna let them kind of take over whoever, whichever one of you wants to kind of go on with this.
I'll, uh, well, what we've done, uh, of course, um, on the city council, uh, the mayor put together a team. Uh, we've been working for several weeks, uh, on this idea to try to clean the city up. There's a lot of ordinance violations, uh, and state violations, uh, that has been left alone for years. So the, uh, gist of this is to try to do a campaign, which is, we're, we're starting up, uh, with media, uh, mailouts, trying to let the citizens know what a violation is and that we're gonna have a cleanup time. And so we're gonna have three specific days, one each month, but it'll be cleaned up the whole time. We'll have a call in line for them to call in for help, of which we will try to provide them help through that whole period of time. So what we were asking for is we've asked, uh, for volunteers and we've asked companies to volunteer. And I think to date we have, what was it, 23?
We've counted 23.
23 companies that have volunteered, uh, their time and, and personnel to, and equipment to help do this. It's a big task. When you drive through alleys, you drive around and you just see the kind of mess that is there. It's, it's a quite a large task that we're gonna try to undertake. So we were just asking, would the county be willing to help us with that project? You may not want to work on a Saturday. You might prefer to work during the week. We will have those opportunities that are there. It's, it's kind of whatever you would be willing to do. And that's, that's what it is.
Okay, thank you. Does this kind of tie into the citywide cleanup that's been done every year?
It's gonna be a community-wide cleanup, uh.
Yeah.
On 22nd. We're gonna have all our trucks and roll offs out there. We're gonna have four, uh, drop off sites around the city. And I don't, with all the volunteers that are, we're starting yet, I mean, it's gonna be a good turnout. I don't think we're gonna have the, the trucks to keep up with the drop off sites, the debris of stuff they're bringing up to drops of that, off, uh, drop off sites. So we're asking for assistance to help on, uh, the 22nd from seven to over one to help us haul this debris and stuff to the landfill. I mean, we might be able to keep up with it, we might not. I mean, we're gonna set roll offs on, out on these sides and, so we are gonna need some help, so.
And Barbara and I have been talking and we, uh, decided we're, or we have checked to see if we can use the armory as a rally point. And on the 22nd of April, we're gonna be able to do that. But the other dates are occupied, so we're looking at other dates or other options for that.
I think I, I went ahead and reserved the pavilion up at the top to see. I'm trying to just take what is usually the citywide cleanup and make it more of a community buy-in. We've talked about in scary county and Snyder, just that community pride. We can't have community pride if we don't give them something to be proud of. So that's where it kind of started and what initiated it. And I think we could take this and make it so much bigger than just a violation sheet and the water bill and what we can do. So our spin on it was, hey, let's do the community buy-in. Let's do all the entities together. So it's been the chamber, the DCOS and, uh, the city kind of working together to get the volunteers called. We've been, you know, lining up these companies, lining up volunteers, lining up the marketing campaign behind it, to help educate the community. And so we were hoping that county would come alongside and say, hey, we want to partner with y'all too. Let's get this done and let's make Snyder what we know it can be. So we, you know, that's what we're asking for is just to come alongside and say, yeah, we're, we're all for it too. We want what's best for our constituents too.
And, and you may sit there and go, well, you know, the, the city is probably one of the biggest offenders inside the city limits. And you'd be correct. And so we have, uh, taken action financially to, uh, reinstitute our mowing program. Uh, Eli is in the process of hiring a couple of guys, uh, to run the mowers and, and the shredders and things to, uh, keep everything that the city is responsible for, uh, mowed and kept up. Cause, you know, you, you can't ask people to do things you're not gonna do yourself. So we're, we're reinstituting some things that were dropped, uh, some years back to, uh, bring our standard back up also.
I do know that when I was there, I, I was writing letters all the time. I'd do 30, 40 letters a week and it was a constant battle, uh, never-ending battle. So it's, it's something that, uh, isn't going away.
It's a real problem and it will never go away 100%, but we've got to get it to a manageable point. And anything y'all would do to help us out would be appreciated.
Yeah, that's, this is up to y'all.
Well, actually, I think we're gonna need, uh, our county attorney to direct us in that matter. I mean, I've been told, doesn't mean that we can't figure out a way under health and safety or something like that, that we've been able to go around some of the statutes that we deal with. But since, uh, the day that I entered office and was, and gone to school after school and talking to the county attorney, counties can't do anything within the incorporated part of the city without a local agreement. And whether that's true in this case or not, I'm, I mean, I don't have any problem helping if we can do it statutorily at all. I mean, we, I think we have a good relationship with the city. The city helps us a lot in lots of different ways and we have certainly appreciate that. And so if we can statutorily, let's do it. I think my guys would be willing to do that. I don't know that we could do it on a Saturday, but probably during the week, take a day and, and help where we can.
No, so. I shoot and until I talk to them, I got. So yes, no. I'm not.
And it's not a full day Saturday. It's 7:00 AM to 12:00 PM.
Correct.
So I think that needs to be clear too, is that it's.
I mean, there'll probably be stuff to go on after lunch, but our schedule time is just gonna be from 7:00 to noon, of which we're gonna try to provide a meal, uh, of some sort. I mean, it's not gonna be elaborate, but to provide a meal for the volunteers.
That's why we were using the armory as just kind of a rally point that we could say, hey, here's a volunteer group of 10 and a, you know, and a truck and a trailer and we're gonna send them over to this area and they're responsible for this. And then they're all kind of, we just kind of all come back as community and just kind of building that and coming back at 12 and having just a community lunch there, that some of the ladies that can't help physically go out and pick up, you know, the couch or the things that need to be thrown on the trailer, but that they could provide the meal and still be, you know, there's all different kinds of ways that, um, you know, as commissioners, y'all can just come help on Saturday. There's so many different things that you can do and just be a part of it. We probably are going to have, just with the numbers we have now, probably around 200 volunteers. And we haven't even really started. This has just been with phone calls. We haven't put it out there, save the date that this is what we're doing. Our marketing is coming.
I know there, there's probably an, an out respect what you're saying. You gotta do it legal and I totally respect that. But I know that when y'all find stuff, you call and, and, uh, either the, the, uh, fire marshal or someone has to go address it. And, and so I know y'all are under the same guidelines that, that we're all under and that's the state of Texas and, and under the fire marshal's rules and it, it does fall under health and safety, uh, from the state and it does fall under that on ordinance also. So I would, I would hope that there's some way we could blend that, even if it means that we need to adjust our intergovernmental agreements, which we probably need to address at some point anyway, bring them up to date.
Okay, well, we've got time. Uh, April 22nd. We have a little bit of a meeting before then, so, uh, we can certainly get with Mike and look at what kind of parameters we need to stress out on that.
We appreciate your consideration, Mr. President.
Absolutely, for sure. Thank you all. Appreciate y'all coming and you're more than welcome to say that you don't have to. All right, uh, court to conduct a public hearing on placement. I guess we'll do no action on that. Uh, court to conduct a public hearing on placement of speed limit signs on County Road 52 in Precinct 1 and we'll start that at 10:12.
We do have a representative from the road here, uh, Mr. Fred Cross.
We were hoping that speed limit would re, be reduced to 25 instead of 35.
And so we're gonna, we're gonna have to meet in the middle there. State statute is, uh, the least or minimum speed limit can be 30. And so we're kind of meeting in the middle there, staying with what the state requires. I, I, I texted Matt this morning and evidently he didn't relay that information, but, uh, that's, that's the minimum that we can actually set on any of them. So we can do that if the court agrees, then that's possible with it.
Well, taking that, I, I'm assuming that you're, you're in favor of lowering.
Well, even though they've covered the pit up west of us, uh, for some reason, there's pickup still going up there.
But not the trucks, just, just pickups.
No, not the trucks, just pickups.
That's changed.
And, uh, that's just, that's just a concern that we got.
Yes.
We don't know how you're gonna police it or if you don't police it, but, uh, we just want them to slow down some.
We have a sheriff's deputy that stays out there.
Well, he don't stay out there, but he's out there.
Well, he's been out there a lot.
Yeah.
According to other residents. And so, uh, he stopped a lot of people that are exceeding the speed limit and are doing something unsafe. And hopefully we'll continue to have him out there and we will add your road to that, so that maybe you'll see more. He's, he stays up on 1116 most of the time.
That's good.
Yeah.
That's good.
Well, that's where the problems have been around the 90-degree curve.
Yeah, I don't know how many to recite that out there. And I don't know what it's, it's a speed or negligence or what it is.
Go.
But there's still some wild drivers out there.
Yes, sir. You're right. And with 500 employees. Yes, sir. That's, that's exactly right.
Okay. And I think with they, the sheriff's department or municipal law enforcement can't really enforce the speed limit if there's no signs. So if there's signs up, then that absolutely helps.
Is there a speed limit sign going to be put on the, uh, Council Springs Road?
We haven't talked about that, but we can talk about it.
There's not, there would used to be one and somebody took it down. There's not a speed limit sign on the west end of the Council Springs Road.
Okay. If there's one on the east end, there could be one put up on the west because it would have had to have come through court to do it in the first place.
But that, that didn't consider the traffic that goes out to the solar farm.
Right. And they use 1101 as well. And now they're, because of Randy being out there, they're using 146, uh, which they're not supposed to. Uh, that's not in an agreement. And so, yeah, they're, they're thwarting, uh, and that's why Randy moved down to 1116, because they're thwarting every way that they can, uh, to stop from getting caught.
Coming to town this morning, I met five trucks before I got to the crossroad.
Yes, sir.
And turned west. And that's just a two-mile stretch.
Yes, sir. I met them yesterday myself. They are there and they, th- those that I met were running the right speed. They don't all do that. We were out, uh, actually patching on the road yesterday and, uh, there were some of them that didn't even start to slow down with the patching that was going on. Thank God we're inside of a cab now rather than out where they can run over us, but we're doing the best we can with it.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any further discussion? Anyone have a comment? We'll close it at 1016.
Judge, I would make a motion that we lower the prima facie a speed limit, which is 60 miles per hour on any county road that doesn't have a improved shoulder, uh, to 30 miles per hour, uh, going forward.
So you're all in favor?
We'll get them up.
All right, court here received proposals for fiber optics for county. And we got one. This is from Optimum. And, uh, what, what we're looking at here is that our, uh, internet has not been. I'm sure some will attest to.
Definitely. Yeah.
And so started looking into that last year, just to get an idea. And, uh, we did agree to go out for proposals on these a couple of weeks ago, a couple of months ago. Give them time if they wanted to get any information. I don't think anybody got any information from us. Optimum is the only one who provided anything. And, um, we did put some money into the permanent improvement line last year, not even thinking about this, just it was more along the line of air conditioners and things like that. There's 186,000 in there. But here, if y'all wanna, now we've sent three copies, but here's their proposal on that. And I think this is gonna be for all county buildings except for the, uh, County Barnes, uh, courthouse and a separate line for the county clerk.
Our, um, the state has been pushing for the last couple of years with Secretary of State for the county clerk for voter registration and election stuff to be on its own separate for secure reasons, so that it's less chance of getting hacked in our voter registration.
And what they're saying is that for all of our, uh, buildings, uh, the build costs would be over $200,000 and Optimum has agreed to absorb all but $45,000 of that. They would look at, uh, they would want $3,776 a month, uh, for the services and with a seven-year contract term. And that's more than what we're paying now, but our service isn't great.
Well, we're.
Yeah, I know that, uh, the treasurer's office has had some major issues with uploading and I think y'all would have some major issues with uploading.
Yeah, and with this going, it's gonna be going to all of our Odyssey, all of our criminal courts. Everything is all gonna be on the cloud, so that's gonna be more weight on the internet. It's gonna just make it worse.
As the courthouse goes, it's definitely something that I believe every department in this courthouse is going to have issues with as we go more cloud-based.
And the more you put it, it took on what you got, which is more.
And, uh, you can see in there, it says the speeds are for the courthouse county clerk, the annex and the law enforcement center, which are all gonna be using, um, the Odyssey stuff. It's 200 up, 200 down speed. Everything else, the speeds are 100 up and 100 down.
And what do we now, 50?
Yeah, it's supposed to be 100 and 100, but it's typically less than that, quite a bit less.
Too much traffic.
Mm-hmm.
Not enough there.
Yeah, and they, they've gone in and, uh, put us on our own node to where we're completely separate and it's, it's helped some, but, uh, it's limited what you can do with, with, uh, wireless.
Exactly.
So another question.
Yes, sir.
What do we know about this code?
Optimum.
It's used to be suddenly like.
Well.
I was hoping to get something from AT&amp;T as well, but I haven't.
They're, they're difficult to deal with.
Uh, standard installation timeline is 90 business days from the date of contract signature. So that would put us right before we switched over. If we did it now, right before we switched over to all the cloud-based stuff.
Well, I bet a lot of technologies is gonna keep going.
It is.
If you can't use it, it's not working.
I'm sure.
Plug in your phone, drops calls, technology is great. You need it.
Right. Absolutely. Yeah. Also, I, just kind of an aside on this, you know, we've talked about, uh, the fiber, countywide fiber and all of that with the, um, the, through the off, governor's office and all of that, the money that's coming down. This for counties doesn't apply to that. We, we can't apply for that, so.
But for the time this contract were to be up, they might actually have 5G and it might broadband and might work and we wouldn't have to continue.
Right.
At that time, but it's gonna be that kind of time before they ever get there.
Yeah, especially to us.
Yes. It's helpful for all counties.
So you said it's 3,700 a month?
Uh, 3,776 a month.
Four. Nine hundred dollars a month. If anybody can't do their job, it's nothing.
Sure, okay.
Yeah, I agree.
I know you're quite interested, but I said that.
Yeah.
Nearly fell on my chair.
I was gonna catch you.
Thank you.
I didn't say I liked it, but it is a necessary evil.
The term was in my head too.
We've got to. I mean, that's my opinion. Because higher male me, um, you're still. Angela. If any one of us, when the hairman is at work.
Right. Absolutely.
Them three do more with than anybody does. Other than, I mean, them three and the annex.
Sure.
I'm like motion that we go with them and, well, can they judge to sign the contract?
And the county attorney to pre-.
Yes, yes, proud too.
Second.
Okay.
Once we get a signed copy of that, I need a copy of the contract, please.
Yes, ma'am. All in favor?
Thank you, guys. My office on.
Yeah. Currently, there's nothing better than fiber, but that could change eventually. That's the top of the line. So, all right, court to discuss and consider rules of procedure. Um, we have rules of procedure. We made changes in them in the 2021 legislation, I believe, uh, that were mandated. Um, and then these are really the same rules of procedure in the forum for the meetings at scary county commissioners court that we had. However, I did find one error, um, on the old one, on the last, on the ones we're currently under. And it's the scary county commissioners court meeting regular session on the, it says, second Tuesday of each month. Correcting that to the third Tuesday of each month. Just clean up on that basically, but, uh, everything is still the same, um, same rules.
Let's make a motion that we, uh, with correction, uh, take the, uh, your suggestion to change these, uh, like they're, or written here.
So.
All in favor?
And we will do the sign, I'll sign a copy.
Do you have a?
Can we make copies? Do we need time? You like.
Yeah. Those are the ones I want to start with. I think just, I just need one that I can, and I'll make everybody copies of it.
All right, court to discuss and consider parameters and conditions for bid, forbids the whole road materials. Uh, we discussed that, that last meeting, but we didn't really have parameters. There were questions that we had, so, and you were out, so, um, we all have a sheet here, request for bids. Bids will be received with parameters, conditions as follows. And I think we need to, I don't know, I think, I'm assuming that we need to put in malfsberga insurance on there. I guess that would be just like the others. And this is, y'all, we're, so, what y'all discussing.
Well, it's just, it's a brand-new thing to, that we're discussing today. It's never been done before, but not saying that it's not worth looking at and talking about and, and of course, Jeff's the one that was interested in looking at bids at least.
The reason I did this was because I've got roads that we can't lock, the public can't lock travel down if they're a bit wet. And I want to fix that. People may be able to get home. I've got so many miles that it's not going to be fair or even feasible for us to start pulling all of our trucks together. And I need other options. You know, I can have a trucking company come near if it, if it works out to where they could go haul it in and once it's hauled in, then I can, I've got my crew doing other things and we'll go lay it in. It's just another option.
Sure.
To keep us from having all of our trucks just tied up all the time hauling and not getting anything else done.
Well, that, you don't technically have a truck, do you?
Well, I'm short a truck and short, well, now today is today, I'm short two of them.
And then, don't look there, you send my trucks.
I'm short one. I'm good on mine.
I'm good too, but there you go.
Right, ma'am. I don't have any.
Sorry.
Yeah, I don't have any problem with doing the upper bids. I think that's a good idea. Especially in Jeff's situation. And we work together as much as we can, but we're all being inundated with a lot of tracking. You're just about to get a lot more. And so it's always good to do that. I think what we're really need to talk about more or less is what, what types of insurance and requirements that we're going to run a whole of these specifications to these companies, you know, so that they know what they're bidding about. So you want $2 million general liability with additional insured, county being additional insured precincts, or, you know, that's something we're going to have to visit with Mike about as well.
Well, before we can actually come up with a little insurance amount, we need to talk to Mike to see what you hire, you hire a company to haul, cliche. They haul it to your road is the county liable if something happens on that county road? Even though scary county is not hauling. That's, that was my question. Because I would think it would fall on the company now.
And you can write that into that bid specification so that the county's held, not held liable.
Right, and that's because, I mean, you, anybody has a rate on county road unless there's something horrifically wrong, mixing call and bill on county road that's been there for a while and wasn't fixed. It's between the two people that gets together on that county road.
Sure.
So, but anyway. But I do think we, we need to have a little insurance just in case.
I agree.
Yeah. How much is?
So, per the road use agreement, the county's, the $2 million general liability with additional insurance. That may be standard, it may not be. This may be a different situation. Wouldn't think it'd be that much different. Because they're hauling. And, and so that may be a starting point and certainly Mike knows, he's the one that was there to write that. So it is probably industry standards to do that.
Right. And he's, he's been on, in on some conversations. I talked to him initially and then you talked to him also. And this list is, is from him. Of course, I think with the agreement is where the, or the liability would come in.
Right, right. Yeah, it helps to call it the stated in the agreement so that everybody knows requirements are different than holding farms or following.
Right, right. And we can.
Do I need to put on there to make sure that their drivers have licenses?
I think that would be a good requirement.
Yeah.
Yeah. Because I think they would come back and say.
I think that wouldn't have to be said, but it certainly would say. Yes. And I think that's stuff that we can clear up between now and accepting the bids and all of that.
Well, then you got to have a biz to know whether it's feasible or not.
Absolutely.
I think Jeff's situation, that's pretty feasible.
So that's an example right there?
Yeah.
Number 11. I believe it was one. Ooh, that's a different one. That's not like mine. Yeah, that's not mine.
Okay. Uh, this is the one we're going to discuss.
Just to specify, I mean, well.
I will give mine.
We can.
Two years. And I get your copy of mine and show you what's being said.
One that is approved for.
For my precinct.
Yeah.
Road use agreement.
Yeah.
And for you as well.
We did, I was thinking on this, 11, is this something we need to add a number two? On the whole future road use agreement?
Oh, wait, there it is. It's spelled out. The coverage is, coverage limits of such violation would be not less than $2 million per current personal injury and not less than $500,000 in the aggregate for property.
Did you see that?
It's on 11.
It's in 11. It's just spelled out. It's not a.
Not written.
It's numbered. Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's pretty concise. It does look like that. I'm just going to do a different name. You know, that's another thing that, because it says and deliver to the county. That's something that his commissioners are going to have to stay on top of because I started digging back to find out when they sent these certificates of insurance with us being additional insured.
Never did.
Can't find them.
Yeah.
No. So, we need to do it.
I have several certificates of insurance in my office that the businesses, they send them to my office.
Okay.
So nobody's ever questioned my office or asked for them, but I have a lot of them.
I was assuming.
I keep a file in there of certificate of insurance for companies that we do business with.
Do you have one from IP Lemon too?
Um, possibly. I have, I mean, there's.
Please look and let me. Because I'm asking them questions and they don't even know what I'm talking about. And then finally, this person says, well, do we need that to precinct one? And I'm sending it to Mike because I'm thinking it probably needs to cover the, under the county name, Scary County. Rather than a particular precinct, even though the work's being done by.
She said IP Lemon. I'll look over.
Thank you. A B. Also, Doug would need that from IP Lemon one as well, if they, if you have those.
Okay.
Could be great. I assume they came to the county judge because that's where the agreements were signed with, you know, back and forth and so.
No, they are coming to my office. The auditors review them when they come.
Okay, great.
And this is another deal I just learned over the weekend that, that during the COVID little timeframe, they actually lifted these tons of requirements or limits and they were hauling 25, 26 tons. So, I don't know if we make one, change the wording on that, or it don't matter, I don't guess. I mean, I will put just a minimum of 21 or 23 tons.
Remind me about that later, the conversation that has been had, and I'd like to talk to you about that. That another county was trying to do legislatively. Okay, so what, do y'all want to go with these parameters? Add the automobile liability insurance. I'm not, that doesn't, didn't listed in here, but the property damage. 500,000 or 2 million?
I think that's adequate. On county roads.
Which one, 2 million or 500,000?
The, just to be written as it is there in that 11.
Okay.
In that.
Well, it doesn't have automobile insurance in here. But do we want to just go with the minimum requirements by the state of Texas on the automobile liability?
I believe right now, if you did, it needs to be above that.
Because any trucking company is already covered with probably 2 million or more because of the trucks. Well, our highways are not getting safer.
So you want to go with 2 million on each?
I would.
And we may want to visit with potential trucking companies because they may have 5 million. Because any, any company that works for Kinder Morgan is required to have 5 million. So to tell them 2 million and then, because I don't think they're going to have two different policies.
You can always just put a minimum of 2 million.
Yeah, you could.
Okay.
Maybe look at their policies and see if they're, how much. If there's any problems that would be caused, you know, either way, because as you learn, as you visit with them and they know what, you know, what they've got. If someone is doing it, is getting it 2 million because they're not working for Kinder Morgan, they're going to be able to do it cheaper than someone that's doing it for 5 million. So that may adjust the bid that you may not get the company you want. Then you're going to have to watch them all the time, make sure they're licensed. Of course, VPS can help you with that. They're helping this company out there at my. At my pretty.
Yeah. All right, all in favor of the motion?
What motion do they go up, allow?
To set the parameters.
Well, make the motion, we set the parameters as discussed. And go after bids.
What do we want those to do?
It's going to be in two weeks.
Very quick.
Well, I'm just saying.
Oh, the.
It has to be.
Yeah, so that, that meeting, and then give them 30 days. So, second meeting in March?
Your word?
The second?
Second.
Second meeting or the second week?
Second meeting.
And second.
Yes. The regular meeting, the 21st of March.
Did you get him?
I got it.
All in favor? All right, so much.
You guys, oh, y'all can get three meetings the first week.
All right, court to discuss and consider the standard form of agreement between Scary County and Burns Architecture LLC for the design and construction of the EMS station, the health department building. This giant thing here has been looked over by an attorney. She put it together. It's the one that we hired when we started all of this. Mike said it's outside of his beta with, so he left it to her. It's gone back and forth. The firm has agreed to it. And minor corrections that were made. And this is what we like to do, I think.
Let's make a motion that we accept the standard form of agreement between Scary County and Burns Architecture LLC for the design and construction.
Okay, before we get to second, you want me to read the whole thing?
No.
Just making sure. Say I'm a second.
I'm going to have to break.
You're going to read it.
I really didn't want to. Bigger glass of water. All right, court to discuss and consider changing policy regarding weather days. Looking at the, the policy, it says county judge will, as determined by weather conditions. I don't know everybody's situation and kind of what we've, what has gone on is we've allowed elected officials and department heads to kind of make their own schedules on that. I say schedules, let me back down. Make their own decisions on those days because one office might have more that live out of town or them, all of them live outside of town and can't make it in. So, and I don't make any other decisions for any other department. I think it just makes sense to allow the elected official or department head to make those decisions based on weather for their own offices.
Take it.
Yeah.
I'll make the motion. Was that, you know? That, that is one of the hardest decisions to make when it's 50 like that.
I'm going to go with 500,000.
Yes. Okay, court to consider certification of additional revenues in the form of funds received from TAC and Gallagher Facets Services Incorporated.
TAC was the amount for the extension service that had held damage last year, but due to all of the held damage on all, so many vehicles, the company was way behind, so we finally got the check, finally got it fixed, and it's 3,709.74. And it will, there's a budget amendment to place it in their auto expense line. This other one is for Gallagher Basket, Facet Services Inc. This was a Colbert, replacement of Colbert, Jeff?
Yes.
That was damaged, so $3,360.50 and it will be a budget amendment to place it back in road materials to part.
Little. Make motion where, sorry, there's a motion, where it moves back.
Take it. All in favor? All right, court to consider appoint the local health authority for 2023, 2024. We're a little bit late on this. Wish we had some changes, so. It's one of those that just slipped. I did speak to Dr. Cooper. He did agree to do it, continue doing it. He has signed the statement of elected department official officer, if we would, elected statement of appointed officer. I'll do that. And health of office for health authorities in the state of Texas, if we so choose to keep him.
He's been a great guy.
He has.
Certainly.
All in favor? All right. Court to discuss and consider upgrading to the DMS III election bundle for the county clerk's office to this to Solutions Group.
What this is, is that it's a company we already use that helps Lori keep straight all of the.
That'd be right before.
What do you mean?
Right before.
Where was it? I think it's.
It's that one.
That one.
Yeah.
Um, helps her keep straight all the voter registration applications when they come in. This is what we use it for now. This is a bundle that will allow her to also keep up with all the DPS applications that come in, keep them organized, keep you straight. It will link straight with Secretary of State. So the applications for ballot by mail, which she spends a lot of time during elections on. It will allow it to go talk directly to the Secretary of State and keep track and be able to monitor those. It will also see what else. Oh, it does a bunch. It's got an audit tool manager that will help us. It's got the retention module. I talked to Angela. Did we find out whether we could? It's too late on the other.
It's too late on the other, but it can be used under records.
Okay, I have the money in my records management and basically I can't think of any other way. You, this is managing our records. It's managing the ballots. It's managing the voter registration. Okay, I have the money in my records management, and basically, I can't think of any other way you, this is managing our records, it's managing the, the ballots, it's managing the voter registration, so it's a records management deal. So, the initial cost is 30,000, but like I said, I have the money in my records management money, and it can't be used for anything here.
Did you read all of this?
I tried to get, it's pretty little. I had to read it on the computer where I could get it bigger. Angela got her magnifying glass out.
I was fixing to be taking, say, what are you trying to hide?
I had to get it, I tried to pick a paper, and that's the biggest it would get. But, I'm asking if I could purchase this with my records management money.
Make the motion to allow, well, the evidence office, county clerk, agree to DMS III election bubble for Scary County clerk's office.
Second. All in favor. All right, court, discuss and consider temporary and partial closure of county road 253 signage and road, road use agreement related there too. Mr. Kendall Morgan's gonna be working on the pipelines, it's a oil pipeline. And it goes across, across the county road, so they're gonna be tearing the whole road up to fix it. If, they said it would be safer if they fixed it while it's still online, then kill the line, so what they'll do is dig it up, they're gonna cut off the casing, they're surrounding it, fix whatever they need to fix, load it back up, and then fix our road. It'll be down maximum two to three weeks. They'll finish all the signage, road closures, and everything. They sent a, well, we sent him a contract. They sent it back, I put that, I consider it in the fire. So, if y'all want to look at this, this is what they sent me, showing what they're gonna do, the sign locations, the whole nine yards. Right now, it's the end of February, first of March.
Still down, right now?
No.
Not that I've done one. That's amazing how they do that with it live.
Yeah.
They, they're going to, are they going to give you any compensation for cutting your road? Are they going to keep that, if something happens, that it doesn't shake it, traffic causes it to? Where there'd be a problem, are they going to?
When, when they get there, they're gonna. Cover it back up, of course, and then they'll, since it's not gonna be warm enough for them to fix the asphalt, and they're gonna come back later, at a later date and fix that.
So are they gonna maintain that during that time, is what I'm saying, is, you know, because then, you know as well as I do, they put it up to the top of the thing, and it's not gonna be there long.
I don't think it says in that contract to do that.
Well, they water package it, probably, okay, put some cletech on. You're, you're happy with it?
Yeah, I am, I, I think so. I hope they will.
Is the, is there any recourse in the contract that you know, I mean, as far as if, if they're not taking care of that? You're just gonna take it on yourself to make sure it's fast move?
I don't know. I think Mike used the standard road use agreement that we have with all the others.
Okay.
And they, they make, I think there may be a few modifications, but nothing that can pick that up.
If, it's gonna happen, anytime you come around, you can put it right, it won't stay, but, that's my point, leaving. If it becomes an issue. I'm not sure Kendall Morgan would always pay you or.
Contract.
Yeah.
One thing I've seen, Doug, you might get with them is, on there, right, they got, if they're gonna approach it, 264, it's 70 miles an hour. They probably wouldn't let them, they'll point out what we can't do, it'd have to be 60 to be the max. And the same thing on quarter 34, he's always.
They're closing that whole section right there, and then only open the through traffic, or not, oh, close the through traffic. Now, in the road use agreement, they either hire a contractor to repair the road and it's agreed to, or. As has happened in the past, they allow county, if they have the ability to do so, to rehabilitate the road themselves, most of them want you to do it, because then you can't drive.
Well, that's, that's an option. The company they're gonna use to redo the road, they use, from what Mike had told me, they use all the time. And I'm kind of like my foreman, I don't even want to mess now with the live pipeline. We're gonna let them redo it.
Yeah, that's fine. I would ask them to, and, and they probably will. All lines I've ever seen, they water packed it, and when they water pack it, then there's no more room for settling. But.
It surely, surely will.
They surely will, but more hard to, to make sure.
Right. They don't have a problem with it, I don't guess that they do.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, pretty much.
I'll second. All in favor.
Court discussed, consider bid on tax, deed and property card for trust property in the city of Snyder. Did these for a while, and then they come back. These are properties that. Taxes hadn't been paid, they sell them at a tax sale, and they get something, they get them back on the tax rolls. I'm glad to see they're starting to stack up. Uh, property looks like it is 1405 M M, it is sold for the amount of 500 to James May in the touch of May. No, I'm, yeah, that, no, yeah.
Back to the family.
Yeah. Then we need to approve the, the sale of this property. Each of the entities approves the sale of the property.
I like the motion, we accept the deal on the tax deed, property. Paying the way they didn't pay.
And they're gonna do it. That's the second, all in favor. All right, court, consider to run out of trash person, project amendments.
There are a couple of non-transfers. The first one is maintenance department. And two, ground supplies, out of maintenance and repair, 500, due to price increases. And then EMS, his equipment.
Sorry, go ahead.
Equipment under 1,000, 593, out of maintenance and repairs, 593. Cover the expenses for the EMS budget, part 10 was TK 520. And then we have three budget amendments. The first two have to do with the certified revenue. First one is the extension office auto expense at 3,709.74 that we received from TAC to repair their vehicle. The second one is the road materials for precinct four, that they received with a culvert for 3,360.50 in road materials. And then the last budget amendment is for the software that Melody's buying for the workers' management on the election stuff. It's been added to an expense line, 30,492, but it comes out of workers' management preservation fund, can only be used for such a thing.
Make the motion, we please allow the transfer of the budget, and say.
All in favor. Okay, Councilman.
Councilman was 1,672,048 cents, 48 dollars and 43 cents.
I don't think I should approve Councilman's payment.
So you're all in favor? Do you want to make a motion again?
We can, we can.
You got executive decision.
Still make the little genius stuff.